Mayor Sperry.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Venice.
Here.
Councilwoman Danuski.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Irving.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilwoman Curtis.
Present. Ladies and legends, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. There's no changes to the agenda that can be added right now. Next item on the agenda, citizens' comments, it's an opportunity to express your views on issues that are important to you as a community. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And we, because of the ex parte, or because of the quasi judicial hearing that we have tonight, meaning that we have tonight, we cannot accept any testimony on St. Edward's Seminary Building. So if you start to talk about that, we're going to have to cut you off. Clerk, please call the first person.
Joe Marshall.
I just want to take this very brief opportunity to interest you, or try and hear what kind of information you might have regarding the possibility of a pool in Kenmore, in a public pool. As you might know, we all grew up with North Shore Pool in Bothell. Some time ago, a development-minded council in Bothell gave that, or traded that resource to McMinns. And now, as I understand, the original agreement on the pool has changed that use that the Bothell citizens had to use the pool into a, now even a saltwater wing. So the original agreement hasn't even found that, panned out. At any rate, I think with our exploding population here in Kenmore, exploding developments, I believe we owe it to the kids of this community in North Shore General. We look into partnering with Bothell, with Burgland, and Kenmore to try to get a public pool for our youth. We were privileged enough to have grown up with it here. And I think we owe it to all the new population that's coming here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Phyllis Finley.
Is this not going to bring today? What's important to me tonight is speaking about this, the ball field at St. Edward's State Park.
Could you please just state your name and say?
Yeah, Phyllis Finley, Kenmore. I'm perseverating, I guess, on two questions. The first question is why the fixation on the St. Edward's location, assuming that the goals of the Kenmore City Council are to serve all children in Kenmore, and to provide more accessible ball fields to Little League. I'm wondering why there is only that one option on the table. I want to backtrack just for a minute, and then for the second minute, I want to offer a suggestion. Under the Growth Management Act, state law, the city has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars each year for planning. Under the comprehensive plan and other detailed plans, including roads and parks, in November of 2015, during council initiatives and not specified on the agenda, the council unanimously approved funding for planning and other environmental studies at St. Edward's Ball Field, singular Ball Field, it's always been one. The public had no way of knowing this in advance. It didn't know it was coming. It was voted on and funded, but not specified on the agenda. Again, the project was never part of Kenmore's planning process under the Growth Management Act, as you know. In addition, millions are being spent on St. Edward and Moreland's ball field development without a funding plan for maintenance. My question is this, other than why the fixation on St. Edward's, what was the big rush? Number one, I can only guess at answers, because I can't find out the real answers. Did it have anything to do with the email between Brent Smith and Doug Levy about now's the chance, let's hold State Parks hostage until we get the okay for the ball field? Or is this business as usual in Kenmore, or other? And I'd love to know what that other is, if there's another. Then a suggestion, again, assuming the goals of Kenmore are to provide for all children in Kenmore, and to provide two fields for the voting block called Little League, so they don't have to drive faraway distances like Bothell or Woodinville. A suggestion would be that the grass at St. Edward be renovated, the cyclone fence, keeping the field walled off for all but exclusive club members, be eliminated. Organized sports occur during daylight hours, when the park is open, and man-made environmental buffers be installed to protect the wetland and its inhabitants. The second needed field can be developed on school property with a portion of the $1.4 million of RCO and King County grant money. Having been a public school educator for over 35 years, I can assure you that there is not one district, one principal, in this area that would turn down an offer from the city to renovate a public school field. They have parking lots, they have lights. It would benefit all children, not just club members, all year round. Finally, my final suggestion, on Wednesday, as you know, you will be addressing the Lake Point development, ball fields in noisy downtown Kenmore on a bus line near local businesses with walkway access. Remember, your walkways and waterways plan would be logically sited there, provided there aren't any catastrophic environmental issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Carlson.
My name is Susan Carlson. I'm from Kirkland, and I've been downtown all day in back-to-back meetings, so please excuse if these remarks are not as well-prepared as I would have liked. So, I am the person behind the Environmental Learning Center component of the Daniels Development, and that's all I'm going to say about that. But to say that Kenmore is enormously blessed at St. Edward's State Park within its boundaries is an understatement. It is well-known that the 316 acres contain the largest expanse of mature forest, the longest stretch of undeveloped shoreline, the great lawn for concerts and picnics, natural grass ball fields where environmental education programs and orgs already stage their program, and that it is still available for all Washingtonians across the state to enjoy is nothing less than amazing. As such, it is not surprising that the over 700,000 visitors that come to the park annually to experience its views on the park entrance road, take the views in over the ball fields to the seminary, experience the quiet serene atmosphere increasingly, is increasingly rare in our urban world. For these reasons, St. Edward's State Park is already a destination for thousands of people across the state, many of whom travel through Kenmore to approach the park. To date, over the-
Excuse me, Mayor Baker?
Yes?
This sounds to me as pretty rambling-
I've been listening, I've been listening for the word.
But it's pretty close. She's talking about the park and its uses.
I'm talking about the opportunities for the city of Kenmore to maximize its long-term economic development opportunities through certain planning actions, indeed.
And what type of planning actions are you going to be talking about?
I'm going to be talking about the ball fields.
Okay. Well, if it's relating to the ball fields, you can talk about that.
Did I get a pause in my minute? For these reasons, to date, none of these people are coming to the park because of the amenities provided by a hotel or a sports complex in the ball fields.
You can only talk about the ball fields, please.
Ball fields, fine.
They're not coming-
You start talking about the seminary, we're going to have to cut you off.
Okay, I'm not talking about the seminary. They're coming for the peace and quiet in the park, to take in the views along the park entrance road, over the ball fields, to the building, to hike and bike the trails, swim in the beach, picnic on the lawn. With the addition of both the enhancement as a destination and the Environmental Learning Center, Kenmore should anticipate that St. Edward's State Park could become a significantly more desirable destination for hundreds, if not thousands, of additional people who will drive through Kenmore to enter the park. All of this can be expected to unfold over the next three to five years, which can be anticipated to result in thousands more people traveling through Kenmore to the park. These people will provide an increased demand for restaurants, retail, and services. In other words, Kenmore's local economy and businesses should be anticipated to benefit from maintaining the park in its current, for its current natural, cultural, and historic resources, i.e. the reason why people come to the park in the first place, and the added draw of the enhanced experience at the park and the Environmental Learning Center. In other words, Kenmore stands to benefit from an ecotourism potential provided by maintaining the park for the park in its current state.
Mayor, we're at three minutes.
It makes little sense to me to upgrade the seminary as a destination, excuse me, to upgrade the park as a destination, while at the same time degrade the visual experience of the view with the banquetries that would shelter a sports complex, degrade the tranquil, serene experience-
Mayor, we're at three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson.
Can I submit my written comments?
Candid, the clerk.
John Hendrickson.
Good evening, everybody. I want to talk to you tonight about the structure of the city council, how the state sets up that cities like ours should have seven council members, and there's a reason for that. And that's so that, you know, if you have sometimes a person with a strong personality, they can tend to dominate a group, a board, or a council. And with seven, we're supposed to be able to overcome that problem. And so I want to give you some examples, on some things I've touched on in the past, where I think the council should question how it is that we're not doing a better job of just addressing issues, ethical issues, issues of legal issues, just general common decency issues. And the whole council seems to be looking the other way. One example is, which I talked to you about last time I was here, which is the letter from Doug Levy, the Little League lobbyist who's associated with Councilmember Smith, where he tells you to, you know, take advantage of this opportunity by basically withholding any permits for the hotel up at St. Edward's until they give you the ball field. Is that coercion? Well, you have to have the, you have to have the ball field. Give me that ball field, or I'm not going to give you permits. And so I gave you the Dolan versus Tiger case, and that-
Mayor Baker?
Yes?
Yeah. Mr. Hendrickson is mixing up the hotel situation with the ball fields.
No, I'm just, say it's not the hotel. Say, say, say an example-
And don't mention it, please.
Not the hotel. It's another project that asked for permit, but you said, no. The letter says here, don't give it to them until they give you the ball fields. Right? That's what it said. The response was, we had, Councilmember Danuski was patting them on the back, saying, hey, we're getting great emails in favor of the renovation, nicely organized. Okay, why, it doesn't pass the smell test, much less pass the Dolan versus Tiger Supreme Court case. You know, why is there no one raising any questions about that? When you went on, and when this issue was raised in November of 2015, about let's go forward with this project during council initiatives, Councilmember Danuski went on about, hey, this is not a big deal, we can just see if we can get a lease, we don't have to get into this in detail, very supportive. And then Mayor Baker said to you, he goes to you and says, and the preparation of the SEPA, do you agree with that? And you go, yeah. Well, he just got you to agree to go ahead and get all the environmental work done before you even got a lease. The exact opposite of everything you were just talking about. When Nigel, in the February 22 meeting, asked if the city manager in all the other cities was approving this project, would be the sole approver of the paw permit, the staff said yes. Three out of the six cities did not have that.
We're at three minutes more.
They had to go into a commission. Right? It wasn't going to the city manager for approval, it went to an independent commission. And the model ordinance had the same thing. So you ask a question, and the staff gives you false information.
Mayor, we're at three minutes.
And your response is to thank them. You're thanking them for giving you false information. You represent 20,000 people. That's deceiving 20,000 people that you represent. And instead of saying you want to correct that behavior, you thank them for a good job.
Ms. Hendrickson, if I can get you to wrap up, please.
So, you know, I think you should be thinking about legal issues, ethical issues, common decency issues, that you're representing the people, that we're trusting you with our money, and not thanking people when you're collectively deceiving the public, and sometimes in the Dolan case, maybe breaking the law.
Thank you, Ms. Hendrickson.
Elizabeth Mooney. Okay. Janet Hayes.
6303 Northeast 181st, number 301. I'm a resident of Kenmore. I'm here to talk about the ball fields, but I am prefacing it with a new idea that I don't think anyone's discussed. The property I'm speaking of is Lake Point. This property will be developed by Whedon on the east half. All property is, that, I'm sorry. This property is Lake Point. This will be developed by Whedon on the east half of the property, with condos, and then access to the, a promenade, or an area that can be part of the community. Why can't the city and Little Leagues have four ball fields on the peninsula, which is supposed to be community accessible, as part of the property? This would be a boon for the businesses in Kenmore and around Kenmore. It would ease the traffic and parking issues, noise issues, environmental degradation, and there would still be access to waterways, because they surround the south, west, and north end of the peninsula. It would open up the area that Whedon is not building on, his apartments on, to the other, to other activities. That could be possible, but community-friendly. A shuttle from Kenmore Park and Ride, or the walkway across 522 for public access that was once promised by the city of Kenmore, can connect us to the Lake Washington by foot. This still continues to be on Kenmore's plate. Walkways and waterways would take you all the, you all to the ball fields and park. The entire piece of property needs to be capped according to the consent decree. That has not changed. I believe Whedon would go for it, Little League also, they'd have four new fields. It would be a win-win for all the community included. It is still bound by the consent decree. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
There is no one else signed up, Mayor.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anyone else wishing to be heard? Thank you for your comments. Ms. Marshall, on the pool, the NPRSA, we're part of that, that's Bothell, Woodinville, Kenmore, and parts of San Homage County. It encompasses the entire North Shore School District. That is formed, that has looked at pools in the past, and will continue to look at pools in the future. Those of you who spoke on the ball fields, thank you for your comments. That is not on the agenda tonight, but we certainly do appreciate your opinions. With that, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mayor, can I just make one-
Certainly.
Correction on item E on your agenda, it should be resolution number 17-294.
That's item E on there, so it's 17-
Yeah, just a typo.
294 instead of 17292. It's a typo. So with that correction, I'm looking for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded with that modification. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda stands approved as modified. City clerk? Could you, the light, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is commercial site plan for Lodge of St. Edward's. Ms. Loyack, Associate Planner. Mr. Hampson.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. In 2016, Daniels Real Estate filed a Type IV site plan application with the city of Kenmore to rehabilitate the St. Edward's Seminary Building located within St. Edward's State Park. The project proposes to reuse and restore the seminary building as a hotel with up to 100 guest rooms, meeting and conference rooms, nonprofit or public organization space, administrative space, an exercise facility and wellness spa, restaurant, and cafe. As required by city code, city staff prepared a recommendation on the application and submitted it to the hearing examiner. On March 1st and 2nd, 2017, the hearing examiner held a two-day public hearing on the application. On March 27, 2017, the hearing examiner issued a written recommendation to city council. The city council will make the final decision on the application. The city council's decision must be based only on the record established by the hearing examiner, which includes the public hearing transcripts, the exhibits admitted into record at the public hearing, and the hearing examiner's recommendation. As mentioned earlier, the city council cannot accept testimony or comment from the applicant, staff, or any members of the public today. The city attorney and I would be happy to answer any procedural questions that the city council may have, either now or during deliberations. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this project.
All right. The city council's consideration of this Type IV site plan proposal, and the hearing examiner's recommendation, is quasi judicial in nature. Under Section 8.C.3 of the city council rules, I must begin a quasi judicial hearing by asking the council members to place on the record any ex parte contacts they've had with either proponents or opponents of the proposal. Although city council's consideration of this proposal does not technically involve a hearing, we will apply this rule to this proposal. Councilmembers, have any of you had ex parte contacts with either proponents or opponents of the proposal? That's a question I'm asking each one of you. Councilmember Smith?
A number of times, both at city hall and at the Kenmore Community Club, and I believe possibly even in Olympia, at one of the public meetings. I know I've met and talked to Kevin Daniels, and I don't know if that's relevant, but I wanted to let you know that.
City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, that is relevant. The ex parte communication prohibition applies only for a pending application, and this application was pending as of July last year. Were those contacts before of July last year?
Probably the only one that would possibly be, would be the one at the Kenmore Community Center, where I believe he was there to give a presentation to the community, and I believe that was after that date.
In this situation, then, state law requires that Councilmember Smith place the contents of that conversation generally on record, and then the city council needs to allow any person who wishes to comment on that, or contest it, or give testimony contrary to that, an opportunity tonight to comment upon that contact you had with Mr. Daniels.
Okay, the conversation was essentially, thank you for coming to the community and explaining your project. That's about the extent of it.
Thank you. And again, Mr. Mayor, we need to give the audience tonight an opportunity to comment upon that comment.
All right. So one more time. The council members, have you had any ex parte contacts with either proponents or opponents of this proposal?
I have another question for you regarding that.
Okay.
I believe it was, in the agenda item, on Appeal Number 17, it talks about, it references the camp process, and I was part of the camp process 10 years ago for St. Edward's State Park, and I know, or have talked to many of those opponents, or opponents, or appellate, I should say, of this plan, not necessarily since the, since mid-July of last year, but I wanted to at least let you know I was part of that camp process to develop the management plan for St. Edward.
But those contacts were before last summer, as I understand it. And as I also understand it, is not, that is not a communication regarding this Type IV site plan application. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So that is not an ex parte communication under the statute.
Okay.
All right, so once more, I'm going to ask the rest of the council. Have any of you had any ex parte contacts with either proponents or opponents of the proposal? Mr. City Attorney?
Does that include situations where I'm attending a meeting as a citizen, listening to a proposal? Like there was a large gathering of citizens at the Utility District Building, where Mr. Daniels presented his plans way back when. I have had no personal contact with anybody attached to the project, nor knowingly anybody who opposed the project. But I talked to a lot of people in Kenmore. So I have, I have no knowledge of any ex parte conversations, but I have been present where the project has been explained.
When was that project explanation? Was it before last summer?
It was before last summer, I think.
Okay, that is not covered by the statute or the ex parte prohibition.
Okay.
Okay. Councilwoman Irving.
So by proponents or opponents, are we talking about just folks that are on the record here, in the hearing examiner record, or are we talking about people we run into in the street who just would unsolicited say something to us?
The statute is talking about, at the time of the communication, if the person identifies that he or she is opposed or in favor of the project, then that would be a proponent or opponent. It is not restricted only to those persons who have appeared at the public hearings and declared their stance on the proposal.
Okay, then I should say that yesterday, when I was visiting my dad's church, there's somebody who lives in Kenmore who was attending, and she just grabbed me for a second, told me she was supportive, and I told her we couldn't talk about that, and we stopped our conversation. That was the extent of the conversation, so.
So Councilmember Irving has placed it on the record, and I would, however, say that that is not a communication that is contemplated by the statute. That is, someone makes a comment to you, and if you tell the person immediately, I can't talk about it. In my opinion, you don't have to mention that, but since you did, it's on the record. Anyone who wants to rebut or comment on Mr. Irving's, Councilmember Irving's contact, they can tonight.
Councilwoman Danuski, did you have a question?
Yes, so there was a meeting, I believe, after July of last year, up at Bastier, where it was informational, where I didn't speak to anybody but listened, and I was talking to you earlier, and that sounded like that did not count. Is that-
When you say informational, was that a presentation put on by the applicant?
I think it was by State Parks that put it on.
Oh, not if it's State Parks putting it on, no.
All right. All questions cleared up. We'll ask one more time. Has anybody other than, who have we got here? Councilmember Smith?
That's it.
No.
Is that the only one, Mr. City Attorney? Is that weird?
Yes.
Okay. So has anybody besides Councilmember Smith have any ex parte, or any communications, either the proponents or opponents, of the- either the proponents or opponents of the proposal? All right. Also, under Section 8.C.3, the City Council Rules, I must ask whether any person, any person, objects to the participation of a councilmember in consideration of the proposal, and if so, explain the objection. And is there any member of the audience who objects to the participation of a councilmember in consideration of the proposal? Ms. Mooney, do you object to a councilmember participating? Please state the objection. Okay, so we're asking for an objection to a particular councilmember from participating in this, and I'm asking you to state the objection to the councilmember.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Since Ms. Mooney has mentioned that she came in late, she would not have heard the first part about how we cannot accept testimony on this.
I'll come in, yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, can Ms. Mooney come to the...
Will please come up here to the microphone so you're on the record. And again, we're asking very specifically if you object to any councilmember participating in this and to state the objection.
I might be incorrect, but just out of concern about you guys having, this is about the site plan decision, is that correct?
This is about the ex parte, this is about the quasi-judicial hearing that we're about to enter into.
Okay. I am concerned about two folks, I don't know if it's illegal or not. One, I overheard you chatting at a public meeting with our engineer. No, actually, it was hearsay. I heard it from my husband that you had asked about what had happened, and that...
When was this?
Was it the meeting, the big meeting? I don't know whatever it's called. I came to a big old meeting, and I heard that you were talking to our city engineer and that the word marble murelet came up, and, again, hearsay, and you said, "Are you kidding?" For me, that's a huge deal, because for me, the marble murelet and Dr. Derek Poon, who died three weeks ago, did the right thing about protecting habitat for all of the state, for the wetlands all at the state, up at St. Edward Park, the site that you call the ball field, et cetera. That isn't to say that it wasn't fair. You may be fine to ask your staff, I have no idea. Secondly, I have concerns because I asked, and this is all on the record, and I don't feel comfortable about it, but I called Michael Hankinson and said, "Why were you talking to Councilmember Smith after the meeting where all of Debbie Bent and Rob and et cetera were all down in Lacey?" And Michael Hankinson took offense, and I said, "Well, isn't this public, isn't this, aren't you a public servant? And I thought you were neutral about this whole thing." And he refused to tell me what he was talking to Councilmember Smith about, and I went to extra trouble to look up, you know, Brent's pursuit. I know that, talking to Rob Carlinsey, that all seven of you are pushing for an artificial turf, which is something that could be preserved in its natural habitat at a state park where there might be a hotel, who knows? But that particular wetland, that particular habitat could be preserved for the marble murelet 20 years from now, if you saw the long-term vision for state park over 60 years. So that causes me concern, especially because we share the teachings of environmental teachers at Pace at Lockwood. I participated in Stream 0056, for which I got an award from Ron Sims, and it seems like my city is not being the best steward of our environment that we are protecting, I think, up at St. Edward Park. So my concern are those two issues. I did not speak with Councilmember Herbig, but I was extremely happy that he objected to the PAUE, which, thank goodness, John Hendrickson proved was not a good thing that you all promoted again after saying no to it in 2007. So all in all, those are my concerns, that you as a unit are not doing what in 2017 should be our goal, which is being the best steward of habitat, you know, protecting against climate change, protecting trees, and promoting environmentally intelligent education at a state park that we have the privilege of being the best leaders for. I think you took a wrong turn.
Elizabeth, this has nothing to do with the question they just asked.
Okay, okay, Mayor Baker, Mayor Baker...
Mr. City Attorney.
Mayor Baker said, "What, are you kidding about the marble murelet? It's an endangered species. It's an endangered species that we're supposed to be protecting that forest for, and St. Edward Park would be a habitat in 20 years for the marble murelet." Is that clear enough? Endangered species should be protected. He said, he talked to the city engineer, and it was overheard, and I think it was inappropriate. I don't know, why am I talking to him?
Mayor Baker has asked for your cooperation.
I'm sorry, I just got interrupted. I don't know what I'm supposed to do then. Am I allowed to talk to the...
No.
Okay, thank you.
For just a few seconds, the mayor has asked me to clarify...
Yes.
...whether you're speaking on the topic appropriately.
I may not be.
What I'd like to do is have the record be very clear that we gave an opportunity to Ms. Mooney to make her argument that one or more councilmembers are now disqualified legally from participating in the decision on the site plan application. So that's, for that reason, I'm giving her a lot of leeway to describe why any councilmember or more councilmembers than one are disqualified. So Ms. Mooney, if you could focus your comments on why there is a legal reason for any councilmember not to participate in the decision tonight.
Well, I...
Because you're mainly talking about...
Legal reason, legal reason.
Communications, communications that councilmembers might have made, but if you could focus on a reason why they are legally disqualified from participating, I'd appreciate it.
I don't know the legal reasons that they are or are not quasi-judicially disqualified.
How about any, how about any reason, any reason, legal or otherwise? Could you focus on that, please?
I think they're prejudiced, they didn't listen to the good arguments that came through about protecting habitat for the exquisite marble murelet that an incredible number of people that maybe he's not aware of are protecting habitat for. We could, we could economically gain from promoting a bird sanctuary at St. Edward Park, and to have my mayor not celebrate that, and not come up to me and say, "Oh, my gosh, I can't wait to talk to you more about protecting the St. Edward Park's habitat for 20 years from now, and our grandchildren will have habitat there, so the fledglings will have five miles, we'll be like famous." Right now, the marble murelet has to fly 20 miles, but you would have to use environmental education to even begin to understand that. His prejudice closed his ears to two days of volunteers giving expert testimony. David Bain gave expert testimony, he's qualified to do so, and sadly, and I didn't plan it, I got wind of him not thinking highly of it, and that's sad to me. It makes me think we have to have a whole different set of policymakers to protect a habitat in Kenmore, because my experience is that despite liking Mayor Baker, liking the council, heck, I'm a parent with Brent, it seems like they're prejudiced against saving the habitat for that purpose, of saving bird habitat for people to have peace and sanctity, which is in keeping with everything that came with the seminary and the people who, I'm not supposed to talk about that though, right? The seminary building and the people who were part of that, I talked to gentlemen who were students there, they came up and they said, "That ball field in this area was all peaceful. It wasn't filled with artificial light, and a marble muretts can't live."
Mayor Baker, if I may?
Yes.
In my opinion, Ms. Mooney has adequately explained her challenge to Mayor Baker. She's, she's testifying at length about the merits of the proposal, and so I would ask for the mayor to ask her to please finish up, that we understand her challenge to you participating, and because we don't want to cross the line of her commenting and testifying about the merits of the proposal.
Right. So, Ms. Mooney, if you could please wrap it up.
Am I supposed to go on about Mr. Hankinson and his conversation with Brent Smith after, or, and learning that Michael Hankinson is apparently the planner for the ball fields?
Is this in reference to the ball fields?
It is in reference to the ball fields specifically.
I don't think we're discussing that, are we? Mr. City Attorney?
Well, if that's your challenge, we understand it. Mr. Smith is disqualified because he had a conversation with Michael Hankinson of the State Parks staff about ball fields. If that's your complaint, then we don't need to hear anything else about it.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mooney. All right. Is there anyone else that objects to the participation of a councilmember in the consideration of this proposal? Mr. Hendrickson.
Thank you. I would just ask the council to review Brent Smith attending the community club meeting where Mr. Daniels was making a presentation about the project up there. It seems like that's a lot of communication from Mr. Daniels to the whole audience, including Councilmember Smith. Probably, to be on the safe side, maybe if it, if that's a violation, you should just deal with it and not get hung up on that in the future. There was a question and answer at that meeting where I asked Mr. Daniels about this Type IV permit process, where I thought it wasn't necessary, the council could have just changed the zoning up there and then handled the public process instead of being shielded from the public process. And, and I also asked Brent Smith at that meeting about that, and he said he couldn't answer that question because it was ex parte, and he was, he wasn't allowed to, and maybe you should check that out, too. I think that it wasn't, I think he could ask her a question about a zoning process separate from this, but he participated in that discussion with Mr. Daniels and myself at that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson. Mr. City Attorney.
Mayor and council, ex parte communications, which are disclosed for the record and brought into a proceeding of the city council, do not disqualify a councilmember from participating in an application and making a decision. Comments made by Ms. Mooney concerning the mayor and I think some others were implied, in my opinion, those comments are insufficient to disqualify any councilmember from participating in this decision. At this point, the council is now free to begin its deliberations on the application itself, based upon the hearing examiner's recommendation and the record before you.
So, we are being asked tonight to, for an motion to adopt ordinance number 17-0437, which is accepting the hearing examiner's recommendation to the city for the proposed lodge at St. Edward's application, site plan application and approving the site plan subject to conditions referenced in file number CSP 16-077. Is there any, any discussion, questions, comments? Councilmember Herbig.
So, after reading this record and seeing some of the recommendations from the hearing examiner, I think the one that stood out the most is the one about, about parking and about the impacts that that may have on current park users, and that's something that I've been sensitive about throughout this process. And I would like to, there's the language that they want to include about addressing parking. I would like to, it has them doing a three-year study and then working with staff if mitigation's needed. I would like that to, I'd like to amend that language a little bit to have it be a yearly report to...
Can you do a page number?
I'm looking at page 34.
34 of?
I don't know what the total number of pages are.
It's right at the top of the page. No?
No, I don't have that. It's under, and that's page 34 of the site plan and FEIS appeal. It says that they would do a parking monitor plan, subject to approval by staff, and then be looking at their largest meeting room event dates, and then the monitoring would be submitted to staff at the end of each of the three years. I'd like that presented to council and for us to have the ability to, to be more proactive in forcing mitigation if even after one year we see that, obviously, there's, you know, if it becomes apparent after one year that there are issues with the parking adequacy, we can address that quickly rather than waiting for a three-year study to be completed.
Okay, so you are exactly where I found the place where you're at. So tell me exactly where the wording is.
So I would just like to add in language, it says that, you know, the results of that study are presented to council every year.
Every year instead of three years.
Right. Well, right now, it would go to staff. I don't know if council really has any review on this. I'd like it to be, I'd like it to come to us, so we're discussing this, because it is a, it is an important resource to the city. It's heavily used by folks, and we want to make sure that folks are still able to use the rest of the park, and parking is part of that. So I'd like a yearly report brought to the council, and then I would like language put in to make it so that we can force mitigation quicker than three years if it's apparent that it just isn't living up to, to the needs that we have as a community.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
Well, we're having discussion right now, so...
Yeah. So, I believe it addresses that. So it says, "The results of the monitoring shall be submitted to city staff at the end of each of the three years subsequent." So the way I read that is you will get a yearly report.
No, it doesn't say that it's going to come to the council, though. It's just saying at a staff level, and I think any remediation is subject to staff approval, not council approval or council mandate.
So what you'd like to change is not the yearly piece, it's that it comes to city staff and council, rather than the, so you're not adjusting the yearly piece, that's already in here, it's who it comes to. I didn't understand.
It's that it comes to us and that, and that we can identify whether remediation measures are necessary, rather than just leaving that to a staff decision.
Councilmember Sperry.
Well, there's the policy and there's the administration aspect of it, and this clearly has language in here that the, there is going to be an ongoing monitoring plan, that there are some specific ideas about each, how to target that each year, and then if there is inadequate parking, then the applicant shall implement remedial measures to assure adequate parking, and then I'm just reading from the proposal. So this could be shared off-site parking agreement, valet parking, approved site plan amendment for additional parkings or limitations on conference center use. So I believe that this is adequate. I would, I can't imagine why it would not come to the city council as far as informational, and if there's anything else staff would like to add, I'd like to know. So to me, the language is good the way it is.
All right. So Councilmember Sperry, you feel that the parking is sufficiently outlined and defined, right?
Well, I do. You know, if there's anything the staff wants to add or anything about it, but I feel very confident that if there's a problem, we will definitely be hearing about it, and we have language in here that says that it needs to be addressed, so I'm not sure what else we would want to put in here.
Councilmember Herbig?
I just think that with the scale of this and with it affecting kind of a jewel in the middle of our city, a resource that so many folks use and so many people count on, that, that this goes beyond just a staff, a staff level thing. There's nothing saying that they'll, I mean, they very well likely would come to us and talk to us about this, but I would be more comfortable with language in there saying, and with us having a little bit more skin in the game as a council, making sure that the parking situation is adequate rather than leaving it to a staff decision.
All right, where does council go from here on this?
I'm okay with the words.
You're okay with what we've got?
Yeah, I think that it does say the end of three years and it will, remediation should be subject to staff approval. I think that's adequate, although I wouldn't oppose if it said city staff, that the proposal should be submitted to city staff and council, so at least we're aware of the report. I don't have a problem with that.
Any objections to be, being submitted to staff and council? So can we, can we make that change to, submit it to staff and council?
Yes, we can make that change.
All right, anything else?
Mayor Baker?
Yes, City Attorney?
I'd like to point out to the City Council that if you look at the proposed ordinance that is in the agenda packet, it mentions that the council is not only adopting the twenty-nine conditions on pages fifty-three and fifty-four of the hearing examiner's recommendation, but also the three additional seep and mitigations on pages fifty-four and fifty-five, which are S one, S two, and S three. If the council wishes, you can describe the changes to S one, which is the parking mitigation, and the ordinance could be modified to say that at the very end of section two of the ordinance, that all of that is approved by the council, provided that S one is amended to say the following, or the word such and such is added in a certain place. If you wish to do that tonight, then it is possible for you to pass the ordinance this evening. At this point, I'm not quite sure what the change would be, but if you'd like to articulate the change that would actually be made to the words, then you could then vote on the ordinance as modified by those word changes.
Can I ask a question on that? So is that just an amendment to the motion if this were to be approved? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There would be amendment to modify section two of the ordinance to change S one. I'm not quite sure what the change would be, which is why I'm-
I have a suggestion.
Asking the council to make that change.
Councilmember Danuski?
The words that say the results of the monitoring shall be submitted to city staff, could be city staff and council at the end of each three years subsequent to full proposal operations in S one, page fifty-four.
So that line would say monitoring shall be submitted to the, to city staff and-
And city council.
And city council at the end of each of the three years.
All right, so I think before we do any amendment like that, we've just got to get the motion itself into the record. So are we through with discussion? Is there any more discussion that we want to have? So then the chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash zero four three seven, accepting the hearing examiner's recommendations of the City Council for the proposed lodge at St. Edward's Plan Application and approving the site plan subject to conditions referenced file CSP sixteen dash zero zero seven seven. Is there a motion?
With the adjustment of the S one, correct?
No, no, that comes as amendment after. The, all we're doing is, is getting the motion on the record with a second. Then we make a modification.
Okay.
You can't make a modification until it's-
All right, so moved?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Okay, now, there's an amendment to this, and Councilmember Danuski, do you want to make the amendment, the motion for the amendment?
All right, I move that we modify S one, sentence to say the results of the monitoring shall be submitted to city staff and city council at the end of the three years subsequent to full proposal operations.
So, and I'll second that. So then the change there is to add staff and city council. Is that clear?
Yes, and you'll vote on the amendment first and then-
Fine. So we're going to vote on the amendment first. The amendment then is to add staff and city council, replace staff with staff and city council. Any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing them. Clerk, take the role, please.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Venice?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
All right. So, the amendment's been made. Now back to the made motion as amended, and this is to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash zero four three seven as amended, accepting the hearing examiner's recommendation to the city, council proposed lodge at St. Edward's Site Plan Application and approving the site plan subject to conditions referenced file number CSP sixteen dash zero seven seven.
Mayor Baker, before you proceed further, I have a suggestion on how the ordinance itself would be changed. My suggestion is that a clause be added to the end of section two, so that what essentially would say is the city council approves the application, adopts the decision portion of the hearing examiner's recommendation that's attached, including the twenty-nine conditions on pages fifty-two to fifty-four of, and the three additional seep and mitigations on pages fifty-four and fifty-five of the recommendation. And then what would be added would be a semicolon that says, then says, provided that the words in city council are added after the term city staff in the fifth line of S one. So we just type that into the ordinance itself.
Okay.
I believe Samantha Loick is writing that down.
And I think the clerk also has it.
Okay, the clerk has it.
The clerk has it. All right, so then the motion then is going to be to adopt ordinance seventeen dash zero four three seven as modified?
Correct.
Accepting the hearing examiner's recommendation to the City Council for the proposed lodge at St. Edward's Site Plan Application and approving the site plan subject to conditions referenced file CSP sixteen dash zero seven seven. Is there any further discussion? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Mayor, or Deputy Mayor Venice?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
So the motion stands passed unanimously. All right. Next item on the agenda is the 2016 Year End Development Services Report. Mr. Hampson?
All right, thank you. Good evening. I'm not going to have any new presentations today, I'm just going to be referring to the memorandum to the city manager that was included in the council packet. And I didn't want to read it all to you, because I know that you've probably taken the time to read it, so I just wanted to hit on some highlights, and if you have any questions as you go through, just feel free to stop me, or at the end, we can, we can answer some questions, I can answer your questions. But 2016 turned out to be another pretty good year. It was a little bit higher than we expected. We, we projected a little bit conservative numbers, and we ended up being a little bit higher than we thought it would be. The three major projects that are major to the city of Kenmore, we spent a lot of time working on, those three projects were the lodge at the St. Edward's State Park, the Kenmore Village, also known as Spencer Project, Spencer sixty-eight, and the Link Building, and also Lake Point. Although we haven't received any conceptual or comprehensive plans from the Lake Point people, we still have been talking to them a lot, meeting with them, and discussing our city codes and other issues that they may have as they put together their plans and proposals.
And Brian, may I just add that it's coming Wednesday night, so in two days from now, we have a special city council meeting, six thirty PM here at Kenmore City Hall, and the only topic on that agenda is Lake Point, and Dean Widener of Widener Development will be here in person to introduce his firm and where he's at on this project. So I encourage, it's an open public meeting, and I encourage everybody to, to come to that meeting. Six thirty PM this Wednesday.
Also, we're still getting a lot of positive feedback from the developers and the community regarding our pre-application process. As you remember, in 2011, we eliminated the pre-application fee, and we're getting a lot of positive feedback and comments from people who are taking advantage of talking to us about development as, as they need. In 2016, we had a pretty extensive list of highlights and achievements, and I won't go through those, but if you have any questions about any of those specific achievements or the projects, I'm more than happy to answer any of those questions.
Spencer sixty-eight, phase two, is that fully under construction now?
It's fully under construction. There's still two buildings that are remaining that need to get a certificate of occupancy. There are the two townhomes towards the, the west side of the project, they're, we could call them F and G.
But they've broken ground, they're ready, I mean, all the buildings broke ground, they're already-
All, yes, all the buildings have broke ground. I would expect that the two remaining buildings will be receiving the certificate of occupancies really soon.
That brings the total number, including Link two?
Pardon me?
That brings the total number of units, including the Link two?
That brings it?
Brings the total number of units, including the Link, two?
How many?
How many?
Just, just over three hundred.
Okay. We were talking about this today, and I took a, a guess, but I didn't get the final tally, so I didn't want to comment, but I think it is about over three hundred.
Okay. If you let me know at some point, that'd be great. Thank you.
I can definitely let you guys know tomorrow. I'll find out the exact number and email you.
Just curiosity.
Okay. Moving on to the graphs, if there's not any other questions on the projects. The total summary, as you'll see, is a little bit higher than last year, 2015, seven percent higher, and it's a little considerably higher than what we had budgeted for, and so we've been really conservative, conservative with our budgeting, and we expect that the, the revenues are going to start to decline over the next couple of years, and so it'll be interesting to see where those numbers fall out. The overall revenues, they don't include the impact fees, and so there's a separate table on page five that has impact fees, and these are the park impact fees and also the transportation impact fees, and as you are aware, next year, North Shore School District will impose a, a school impact fee in roughly ten thousand dollars per new single-family residence. And so just for consideration, or just to know the extent of what we charge for impact fees, a single-family house is roughly twenty-five hundred dollars for the park impact fees, and currently ninety-three hundred dollars for the transportation impact fee. So that'll be around twenty-two thousand dollars next year for impact fees for new single-family residences. The land use applications that we received, most of the revenue mainly comes from subdivisions, so short plats and long plats, and long plats are consisting of subdivisions in excess of ten, so ten or more. We, we consider, excuse me, you know, commercial site development permits, new multifamily permits, long plats and short plats, substantial land use applications, and you can really notice the upward trend in new constructions of that, for example, the, the new multifamily development and the increase in, in new long plats. And so the city really hasn't seen too many long plats over the last five years or so, and so the last couple of years, we've seen roughly eight new long plats, and in the last couple of years, those are, like I said, plats that are over ten, so that's good to see. There's a lot of redevelopment going on in the city where people are purchasing multiple parcels and demolishing residential units, or their houses, and, and getting a bigger density.
Brian, can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
Would it, from the point of application until it's actually, they're typically built out, what's, what kind of timeframe do you usually see on the long plats?
Long plats, we'll see, the land use application permitting will take about eight months to a year, and then, you know, build out afterwards is another, a year to eighteen months, depending on how many lots there are. But typically, we'll see smaller long plats, so we're going to see in the range of from ten to, to twenty lots being developed, and I could see that those will take a year or year and a half to develop. So we're talking probably two, two and a half years from the time they come in for the pre-application until they are totally built out. But another important thing to point out is even after they're totally built out, you know, the city's work isn't done. We have financial guarantees and monitoring periods that follow that, and those can last from anywhere from two to five years following, if everything goes correctly. Some can actually go longer than that, so.
When, when does the, for the North Shore School District, if their impact fee, I assume it looks like it's on pace to, to go through and everything, when would that become effective? And would you anticipate you're going to get a surge at all before that, or not necessarily?
I, I expect that we'll get a surge before that if people have their subdivisions in the queue and they're ready to make the building permit applications. Right now, what we're seeing is people who have previous long plats and, or have already been approved, they're coming in right now for their building permits, and so I could see that the, the, the long plats that are in the queue or the subdivisions that are in the queue now, those will be a big surge for those building permit applications. And I'm wondering, I don't have the answer to, is what are we going to see on subdivisions? Are we going to see people trying to get in for a, a short subdivision before the 2018 school impact fee kicks off in order for them to, to get in for their building permit? Because their building permit application is when they are, what triggers the impact fee. And to answer your question about what our process is through that, I'd probably have to ask Lori or Debbie to answer it, but I understand that we're going through the process of updating the comp plan this year, and hopefully by the beginning of eighteen, I think that the plan is to have something in place that we could, we could accept the school impact fees.
One last question on that.
Does that?
Does that impact fee go, is it effective in all the municipalities at the same time, or is it staggered based on when the comp plan is updated with that?
Yeah, it's, it's not based on all municipalities at the same time. It's basically each municipality will have to take something on, you know, themselves, and, and as I understand it- And as I understand it, I see Debbie's coming up to help me, but some municipalities have already started charging the fees of 2017 for the school district impact fee.
So it will be a council decision. It will be an item on the council's work program. We anticipate bringing that forward to council probably starting in November. The comp plan changes, which are pretty minor, are before the planning commission, and that is that there is the ability to collect impact fees. So it will be a council decision. Again, more to come on that. Right now, the impact fees are just proposed for multifamily units, not single-family. So again, I know there was a lot of questions that council has about how those fees are applied, what those fees will be, and that discussion will be coming forward starting in November. And again, when or if they will be applied will be a council action probably first quarter of 2018.
I'm sorry, did I just hear you say that they're proposed for multifamily?
Correct.
The school?
Yeah, I think you said.
No, that's what they're proposing right now. The impact fees are proposed for, sorry, single-family, not multifamily, excuse me.
All right.
Correct.
Any other school impact fee questions before Debbie gets all the way back to her seat? Moving on to engineering permits, the revenues for our engineering permits are up 37% from last year. The major source of our engineering permit revenues come from inspections that are part of the engineering permits. And so the reason that we're seeing a higher uptick on these engineering relate back to the recent long plat and subdivision applications that we're getting. Moving on to the building permits, building permit revenue is a little bit down, but the overall permit review and intake is up. And the reason for that is our building permit revenue is based on valuation. And so we may not have got as fancy as buildings that were built this year than last year. And part of that probably was because last year included the Link Building. I wanted to point out the new single-family resident permits that we're getting annually. It's been pretty steady over the last three years, 90-plus new single-family residents. And I think that's probably going to be pretty flat or pretty consistent going next year, the next two years. We should probably expect to see that number about the same. The main reason is because of the shortage of new single-family residents, and people are buying up old houses and tearing them down and whatnot. This year-end report included service action, excuse me, service request or cars or citizen action requests. And so now we're tracking how many citizen action requests are assigned to development services. And you can see that there are substantial amount, and these could range from anything from an email response or a phone call response to turning into a code enforcement case, which jumps into the next, the graph where it talks about the code enforcement cases that we've opened and closed and are continuing to be active at the end of the year. And as you'll notice, it's pretty low, especially for the amount of cases that are open per Moving on to facility room rentals, similarly to the cars, the facility room rentals is something that we're tracking now. What we're finding is just the administrative process of putting, you know, of processing the request, we're spending roughly 30 minutes on each of these applications. And so these could be requests to use this room or the room next door, both rooms or whatever that may be. But as you can see, in 2016, we had 104 requests to use our facilities. The last graph shows how many review meetings that we have. And we break our review meetings into four different types of meetings. One is a pre-application. One is a pre, or excuse me, it's a review comment. So after we get done with our reviews, we'll meet with the developer or the applicant and go over our comments before we finalize them into a final draft. Then we have pre-occupancy meetings and also pre-construction meetings. But predominantly, pre-application meetings are the main majority type of review meetings that we have. That's pretty much the end of the report.
Any questions? Any questions? Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, on the facility room rental request, I know that we have, in our policy, it's set up so that it's kind of a community benefit and citizen benefit to not have a fee unless you've rented it so many times in a period. Are most of those non-revenue generated uses, I assume? Or do you know?
I don't know.
That's fine.
I could look into that and get a better understanding of how much revenue we would use. My gut reaction is it's roughly half that would be paying for the room.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Curtis?
I just have a general comment. I love seeing reports with lots of numbers and you're keeping track of things, and it just gives me a good feel for what your team does. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right, next item on the agenda then. Is land use streamlined project. Ms. Mintz, Director of Community Development.
So Lori does have a little PowerPoint presentation, so if you, I see most of you have your screens raised. So while Lori's pulling that up, the purpose of the streamlined project or the land use streamlining project is to provide consistency, simplicity for the code. And this effort was begun in 2014 when we were looking at the regional business zone and associated zones. And in that case, what we did was we took 200 uses and whittled them down to 50 to make it easier for the public to use the code, easier for interpretation. And we now want to extend that effort to the rest of the zones. Sounds simple, but it isn't. It takes a lot of work, a lot of attention to detail to make sure that that consistency is there, that it makes sense, and it ripples through the entire code. So this is a tremendous amount of work that Lori has taken on and has admirably come up with a proposal for you. So this evening is the first of two meetings, and we'd like to kind of step through how this applies to several zones so that you can kind of understand the process, how we got to the result that we did, and to highlight some of the policy questions. The intent of this project was to keep the vision of the zones the same and to minimize the amount of policy issues and questions, although there were a few minor ones. So that being said, I'm going to turn this over to Lori. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Baker and council members. I was turning around and looking in the audience because we had an intern who did some of the preliminary work for this project, Jennifer Lambrick. And even though she's not here, I want to at least have her name before you. She was a big help, a graduate intern that started this project off. So as Debbie mentioned, this streamlining project started with the regional business zoning district project, which was in 2014, concluded in 2014. And again, we took some 200 land uses and worked, we hope, some magic and created 50, actually it's 52, land uses and hoped to use those consistently across all of the zoning districts. Now, if you were to look at the code, for example, in the single-family zone, you would see, I don't know, maybe 60 different land uses. And those land uses are different than the land uses in the downtown commercial zone, for example. The goal here was to try to use a consistent set of defined land use terms in all zoning districts so that it would be more easily understandable for applicants and easier for the permit staff to implement. And again, as Debbie mentioned, we were trying to make that translation with as little policy impact as we could. It was a challenge at times, and we've tried to identify the most significant policy issues that we came across for you in the material. So what are we doing tonight? The goal is to use three zoning districts, the single-family residential, the community business, which is a commercial zone, and the public and semi-public zone, to describe how these translations happened and to answer your questions about the process. It's a lot of material. We actually included all of the material in your attachment five, but have no intention of going through all of that this evening. So we just want to highlight some of the way the process happened and then identify questions that you may have. So what has changed? Again, three zoning districts are done, but nine zoning districts have yet to be amended. As far as the definitions go, we're trying to eliminate old unnecessary definitions. And there were some minor adjustments to the new definitions as we went through. Then there are the other code sections that use definitions that we had to go through. So we had to go through every section of the code and try to pull out any section that addressed a certain use and see if it fit the new terminology, and if it didn't make an adjustment as needed to make the code section clear. This was particularly important in the parking and landscaping chapters. So you'll see that there is, in that attachment five, there are several changes to parking and landscaping uses. So again, we tried not to make any policy changes, if we could avoid it. And those that we did have to make are summarized for you in attachment four to the materials that were provided with the packet entitled Policy Summary. And one thing I really wanted to point out was changes to review processes. In all zones except two, there are only permitted uses, conditionally permitted uses, and prohibited uses. But in those two zones, there's another section called special use. And special use is a zoning process that in fact has very similar criteria to conditional use. Again, in your attachment four, it kind of compares the two criteria. But we did go ahead and eliminate that special use. Those uses generally then became conditional uses so that it's consistent across all zoning So unless you have preliminary questions, I'm going to jump right in, and I'll try to go through this quickly just to give you a flavor of how the change occurred and then to identify your questions and where you need more information. So the first zone we're going to take a look at is single-family residential. This is one of the very hardest zones to do because not only are there a lot of uses, but this is another zone that we inherited, for the most part, from King County. So if you were to look at page one of your attachment two, that's the existing single-family zoning district chart. And then you can look at the translation, which is page one of attachment one. And that's just if you want to call it up. You don't need to do that, but I'm going to just walk through how a translation might have happened.
On your PDF, it's page 173. It might help.
Page 172.
Thank you.
Page one of attachment one is 165. Where are we going?
I honestly don't have the PDF numbers.
No, where do you want us to go?
Okay. So if you want to compare the two, it's page one of attachment two and page one of attachment one. That would put the two single-family zoning charts side by side, and the longest one is the existing one. And the short one with the new land use definitions is the proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? All right, so I'm just going to run through how we made some of the changes. And I'm going to give you three examples. So there are several items listed in the existing chart. Library, museum, and artist studio are three existing terms. Those terms are now arts and entertainment indoor in the new chart. So what we're saying is that those uses, library, museum, artist, studio, all have to do with arts and entertainment, and they're indoor. There's also an arts and entertainment outdoor use, but that is a separate item. In another case, social services and medical dental office outpatient clinic became healthcare and social assistance. So they're grouped, those terms are now in a single term, healthcare and social assistance. A third example, and this has been the most striking example, has to do with retail uses. So drug stores, florist shops, food stores, all of those are now listed as retail sales. And if you were to go down the chart, the old chart, you would see that there are a wide number, there may be 10 or 12 different retail uses listed independently and different across zoning districts. So the idea is that the impacts of a retail business are essentially identical in most cases. A shoe store does not have many different impacts in terms of general land use than a jewelry store or a shoe store, jewelry store, photographic equipment, that's another current use. So all those became retail sales. Then we used the footnotes. As you know, in the existing chart, I think there may be 40 or 50 or even 60 different footnotes. The footnotes provide more specific direction for each use. And so we had to use the footnotes to make sure we weren't making significant policy changes. I'm going to give you two examples of that. Air transportation service. It was formally discussed in the footnote to residential accessory uses. Now, air transportation service is a standalone use, but a footnote was added to preserve and refine the existing standards. Retail sales footnotes were used because there were minimum maximum size standards, and there were some retail uses that were specifically prohibited, and those we retained by making a comment in the footnote about it. And then lastly, policy issues. I'll give you a couple of examples from the single-family about policy issues. And again, these are detailed in your attachment four. So some uses were moved to the prohibited column. And jail is a good example. Jail formerly was a special use, but something called a jail farm camp, I'm not even sure I know what that is, but it was prohibited. We made the choice that secure facility, which is the new term, should be prohibited in the single-family zones. Another example is a theater. It's now okay in certain cases, if it's in a historic building or a reuse of a surplus non-residential facility, et cetera. And that follows along with other arts and entertainment indoor uses that have those restrictions. Okay? So are your eyes glazing over? Should I continue to the next section?
Can I ask you a question on that? Do any of these changes affect either anything that's either, that there was, they're either potentially in the pipeline or it's affecting the actual, maybe a non-conforming use of any site or anything?
Right. So what we tried to do is to look at that issue. In some cases, for example, there are zoning districts that have those things called existing legal uses. We eliminated that term in the regional business zone. But there are other places where things are currently permitted through special rules that wouldn't normally be permitted. And we carried those forward using footnotes. So we've tried to be really true to the spirit of it. And the idea of whether something in the pipeline would be affected, again, because we've tried to make this close translation. in the pipeline would be affected, again, because we've tried to make this close translation, I can't say definitively that something would not be permitted that is permitted now, but we certainly don't anticipate that. All right. So the second zone I wanted to look at was community business. Again, this is a commercial zone, and this is, if you want to do the side-by-side comparison, the new land use terms are on Page 6 of Attachment 1. The existing district is on Page 14 of Attachment 2. So I'll run through some of the translations. So here's an existing use: private stormwater management facility. Now it falls under the category utility facility. General business services becomes business service standard. Business service has two options: it's business service standard and business service intensive. Business service intensive has more potentially adverse land use impacts. And then services onsite becomes personal services. And again, so these terms are consistent, would be consistent across all zones. The footnotes, again, provide direction. In this community business zone, which is along Northeast 181st, here just west of downtown, formerly bed and breakfast guesthouse was a permitted use, but hotel and motel were prohibited. So the new term, no more hotel motel bed and breakfast guesthouse, the new term is temporary lodging. And there was a footnote added that says that hotel motel is prohibited. So you get to the same place using the new term plus the footnote. Again, formerly arts and crafts schools were permitted, but K-12 schools were a conditional use, and the new term educational service makes this distinction for those uses. Policy issues, and this was probably the most serious policy issue that we ran across, is that in many cases, uses were just unaddressed. So we have our 15 new uses, and we have zones that don't speak to those uses at all. So we had to make some calls about whether a use should be permitted, conditionally permitted, or prohibited. And again, Attachment 4 hopefully describes all of those. So in the community business zone, business service intensive, again, that's the one with more negative land use impacts, funeral home, and standalone parking, all those uses have been added to the chart. All office uses are now permitted, where previously, public agency or utility offices, non-city, that was a listed land use, was conditionally permitted. And we couldn't figure out what's the difference between that office and any other office. So we treated all office uses the same. And the last zone I just wanted to touch on this evening was public and semi-public. And I chose this one because public, semi-public, the golf course zone, and one other, which is escaping me at the moment. What's the third one? Parks. The parks zone shouldn't be escaping me. So in these zones, the use allowance chart takes a different direction. And if you want to compare them, Page 17 of Attachment 2 is the existing chart, and Page 8 of Attachment 1 is the new chart. And I'll describe some of these changes. Commuter parking lot becomes standalone parking, that's the new term. Cultural facilities become arts and entertainment indoor. So here's an example where cultural facilities, it doesn't say library, museum, et cetera, it just calls it cultural facilities, but we've translated it to the new term. And caretaker residence accessory is removed entirely as accessory uses are handled separately. We don't now have listings of appropriate accessory uses. There's a defined term for accessory use, and then you look at it and you make a call about whether it really is an accessory use. Footnotes provide directions. So standalone parking is limited to commuter parking, because that's what the term was previously, and it was only intended to be for commuter parking. And a footnote to construction and trade, which was a conditionally permitted use, explains that it's limited to public agency maintenance yards or facilities, which are currently conditional uses in that zone. And now the most significant part for this zone, golf course and parks, is that this zone allows all classified uses that aren't listed as prohibited to be considered through the site plan review process. In fact, St. Edward State Park process that you, Seminary, that you looked at earlier was the site plan review process. And for this reason, we couldn't list all of the uses because it defeats the intent of that zone. So we only listed the uses that are currently in the chart, leaving all the others as options for the site plan review process unless they were specifically prohibited. So that gives you kind of a flavor or an overview of how the changes were made, and the next step in the process would be on May 8th, where we, I doubt that we would go through every single one of the amendments, but that would be an opportunity, perhaps by exception, for you to address questions, or if you have questions or comments tonight. And then at the point where you feel comfortable with the charts, we would try to schedule a public hearing and possible ordinance adoption.
All right. So tonight, we're got questions and identifying issues and coming for a discussion of all remaining events on May 8th. So anything come to mind now? You can always get them in writing in an email to Lori, Councilmember Curtis.
Just a general comment again. In my work previously with the Downtown Task Force, I remember how difficult it was to get all these columns correct for one zone. I cannot imagine how hard this was to get all the zones to actually talk to themselves. I did, I have one question, though. Did you use, like, as you use the new terminology, is it standard definitions, or did you get creative and do some of your own?
So what we did with the definitions was that when we winnowed them down, we used something called the NAICS system, which is the North American Industrial Classification System. It's a standardized tool to identify all different types of land uses. And so what we did was, we used that, those definitions, and came up with our proposal. So office means this, write the definition, and then in parentheses, could include or may include NAICS. And then we put in the NAICS codes. And those codes refer you to this big book, actually, it's online now, that's how old I am. It refers you to an online directory where you can see what the codes mean. However, I will say that in the very, in the introduction to the zoning code, we wrote in a new section, again, this was in 2014, that said, here's how you can use the NAICS codes, but the NAICS code is not the limiting factor. There's still some room, some discretion in making a decision about whether a use does or does not fall into this particular definition.
The actual wording, so it sounds like the NAICS code, you can either do more specific or less specific.
Correct.
And you sort of fine-tune it where you want to.
Right. Correct.
Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate any time we can streamline these types of often very confusing rules to help. There's actually, and I was thinking about it, you were talking about how much work it is to do this, and there's actually a line I read a long time ago, and it was about, you know, way back when, when they wrote letters, like the Jeffersons and the Washingtons. And the line was, "I'm sorry, I wrote you such a long letter, I didn't have time to write a shorter one." So thank you for helping us write a shorter one.
All right. Anything else? If you have other questions, if you think of anything else, please get them to Mrs. Anderson or Mrs. Bent. Just get the questions in, or Mr. Carlinsey. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
One housekeeping thing. Mr. Hampson gave us a splendid report, and I just want to make sure with a thumbs up that we will receive that report, correct? All right. We got it. That report is officially received. All right. Next item on the agenda, discussion of Twin Springs preliminary master plan approach. And Councilmember Sperry, I think you were the one that suggested that name of Twin Springs, and it has stuck.
Well, you know, I'm glad that it has, because the other names, I didn't care for, but it's actually a historic name, and it was the name of the precinct. And way back when, when we used to go and vote, that was the little card that was right in front of mine, Twin Springs.
Really?
Yes. And there's two springs, so it was appropriate. But thank you for, I'm glad that it is.
I don't recall what the previous ones were called, the horse park? I wish. Ms. Bent?
Good evening, Council. I'd like to introduce Guy Michelson with the Berger Partnership. He's a landscape architect and hopefully here to help us move this interim plan forward for Twin Springs. So as you're aware, the capital improvement program for parks allocates $40,000 to develop an interim plan for public use of the site. An interim plan definitely implies minimal cost for improvements and maintenance. You may recall that after many years, the land was finally transferred to the city last year after King County completed their Brightwater project. So the city gained 25 acres of new parkland. One of the conditions of the transfer was that the property be continued for park use. So last July, we had a meeting with you, and the staff recommendation was to keep the park closed to the public pending development of an interim plan, and also probably having a discussion later on after development of the interim plan to allocate additional resources to implement that. And at that time, also be a discussion of maintenance, which Public Works are working on that, that study to look at maintenance issues, so bringing on a new park. We'll probably have a clearer idea of what those additional costs would be. So the reason for tonight's meeting is to sort of, I want to kind of get a thumbs up check, I guess, to make sure that Council's expectations are being met as we move forward with this interim plan, that the scope of work that we're proposing for this, hopefully with Guy and the Berger Partnership, meets your expectations, and that what you are actually thinking about, what that means to open up the park to the public, so that we start off on the right foot with you as Council before we kind of get too far along in the scope or kind of roll this out to the public. So what's on your screen right now is, this was a sort of a pre-master plan that the Berger Partnership put together for possibilities for Twin Springs. So you can see, looking at that, there's a, you know, a parking area, there's some trails, there's a little playground. And the reason that this is kind of restricted to the central area of the park becomes more apparent, if I can, I'm having trouble here. Is this property is, anyway, I won't, I will ignore that right now. So the property is kind of restricted by some steep slopes. About 16 acres of the property is steep slopes, about seven acres is wetland or wetland mitigation, and there are sort of two acres in the middle of the park, which is a flatter graded area, which is probably the primary area for where the public could use the site. So that being said, we, Guy went out to the site with us and was very excited, actually, about the possibility of developing this plan, looked at this as a great piece of property that would be a great asset to the city as a park. So after going out to the site, we asked him to develop a scope of work, which he did, and the proposed scope is outlined in the agenda packet. And you can see it kind of falls into doing an inventory, so collecting the data, making sure we understand clearly what the restrictions are on the site, getting familiar with the permits that were issued for the site, for the Brightwater project, and then doing some public outreach. So public outreach can take many forms, but we would really like to take something to the public, which says, here's kind of what the site looks like, here's some of the potential, what do you think could be done on the site? But we want that to be realistic, to have realistic expectations about what could happen on the site, and Rob's waving, so.
Yeah, and you're probably, I'm probably about to steal your thunder, but we're actually asking for two types of comments from the public if we enter into this agreement with Berger. One is, what would you like to see as far as minimal improvements just to get the park opened? And number two, what would you see, would you like to see as long-term improvements? So the goal of this agreement that we're hopefully about to enter into with the Berger Partnership is for them to just do a conceptual design that would, just do the bare bones, minimum things needed to get the park open. That's the conceptual plan, and that's the $40,000 that's being proposed to work with Berger. And it's just a, and it's just a high-level conceptual plan. After walking the site and seeing all the drainage issues and parking issues, just minimal improvements just to get the park usable, we're probably talking north of $1 million just to get the park usable, if we're going to address basic things like drainage and parking. So that's what we're asking the Berger Partnership to do, is just give us a conceptual plan just to get the park open with minimal improvements, and we'd like to hear from the public on what those minimal improvements could be.
I guess I didn't talk fast enough, because that's what I was going to kind of end with. So that's kind of where we are. I don't know, Guy, if you want to kind of add, you want to add anything at this point?
I've got a question.
We have a question.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yeah, so if I read this, it says, "public outreach including blah, 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 blah," but basically, building support based on realistic expectations. So I think that minimum to get the park open probably doesn't even really need community support, those are kind of just facts to open it. Are you thinking that the public will be able to do some fun things as well? Is that what you're asking for in public outreach?
We're not sure what the public will come up with, but they may want to have something like frisbee golf or some other activities like that that would be minimal.
But that wouldn't be the minimum to open the park? So that's like a step up from the minimum to open the park? So we're going to get a minimum to open the park and then a community fun, realistic expectation layer? Is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah, you're right. I mean, we could, we could just have lawn. But we want to get a sense from the community of even what that configuration looks like and things like that.
Okay. Because I didn't, I guess I didn't see a budget here, so realistic expectations kind of are based on a budget. So I don't know. I guess when we go to public outreach, we need to be really clear what are, what we can or can't do, because the public's not going to know how much a frisbee golf course versus a play structure costs, and then they might be disappointed.
That's a good point. Yeah, managing expectations on what it means to just open the park and do minimal improvements is going to be important. And I would add, I think.
It's up.
So I think that that's exactly part of what this does, is A, we set realistic expectations, but you're right, the public, we don't expect them to know what everything costs. That's one of the things we can tease out through the process, and so one of the things we've talked about is acknowledging more ideas will come up than are minimal, and it doesn't mean we slam the door on those, but simply say, those are great, let's kind of start to generate a parking lot that's probably becoming more involved for some reasons like this, this, and this.
like this, this, and this," but that doesn't mean this couldn't happen on the site in the future, but it does allow us to kind of look, even minimal things like what does it mean to be a neighborhood park, where can we park people, do we park people, where are people walking from, is there safe ways to get to this park? The hillside used to have access to the school beyond on the uphill side, years ago I walked that and was able to find that route, I don't know that I could now. So, those are the kind of things, is helping the public through understanding kind of what is minimal and works, and allowing us to acknowledge things that might be great ideas but don't fit in that minimal loop, but can be on a parking lot for future endeavors with increased funding, would be one of the outcomes of this process.
Because I've been to a lot of those park planning things, and people have a lot of fun, and they have great ideas, and they're usually way over what we're planning here, so.
Oh, totally, yeah.
But we do want to hear those ideas, I think it's important even to hear those ideas, even if we're only thinking about doing minimal improvements, we want to kind of be able to set the public expectation about what it would be, but we also want to definitely hear those ideas and, you know, put them on a list somewhere, but like I say, you know, if you come up with something that's really creative but very expensive, we'll certainly kind of keep a note of that, but it likely won't happen at this point. And right now, the only budget allocation is $40,000, that will get us through developing this interim plan, it doesn't, there's no money allocated for, if there is a need to do any site improvements or minimal site improvements to open the park, so that would be definitely a discussion we'd have to come back with to Council.
And would let you pursue grants as well, because you'd start to have a vision in place and some preliminary costs, Brian, you do that.
Councilmember Herbig. Debbie, earlier you mentioned the steep slopes throughout the property, are there any, or what are the restrictions on what, are there restrictions on what we could do on the slopes, or is that just more of a, you're just kind of painting a picture of the property? You lumped them in with the wetlands, and I know the wetlands are protected, but the, you know, I like the idea of disc golf personally, and a couple of the places I like to go have a lot of steep slopes and have holes going up along hillsides and up and downhill sides and that sort of thing, so, is that something that would be prohibited?
It depends on what you were doing to the steep slope, if you were doing significant grading on the steep slope, that might be an issue for compliance with critical area rules, if there was a minimum invasion on the steep slopes, it might be okay. Trail might be okay, but, you know, if you're going to clear cut everything, probably not. So, again, it really depends, so I think if you were trying to do something on a steep slope, we would be looking for the minimum amount of thing that you would have to do on a steep slope, because if you get into any grading work, then the costs immediately go up, and permitting becomes more complex.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Well, the, thanks for talking about expectations, with managing expectations and realistic expectations and setting public expectations, because I could see this is one where we've been talking about it for so long, about going through a master planning process, and I would hate for there to be a misrepresented expectation of just how extensive we're going to do something there. But one of the things I want to ask, so, when you go to, you get your public input, are you looking at this as a phasing project then, when you say the minimum to get it open, and then it goes to something larger, or are you thinking this is just for kind of an indefinite period? And I ask because it's possible that the long-term or the bigger plan, whatever you're thinking or whatever the public's thinking, could be totally different, and if we're spending north of $1 million just to get it open, I'd hate to have to redo what we just did, and just if you could tell me what you're, kind of how you're thinking that through.
I don't, I'm talking to think here, but I don't think, I don't think, I would be hesitant to call it phasing, because we won't be laying out concrete future phases, but realistically, this would be an initial phase, because it would be opening the park up, and I think that the investment is such in how we would use it, would be laying the groundwork for future further improvements, not running counter to those. You know, again, a big part of this site is, it's called Twin Springs Park, but I'm pretty sure it could be called Quintuple Springs Park, maybe, you know, keep going, it's kind of crazy, there's a lot of water on the site, which we can make an asset, but if we even start to claim this with, say, looping paths and get nice pieces of grass and sheet flow to move water in a more concentrated way where we want it and away from where we don't, that's laying the groundwork for future more significant investments like play areas or courts or who knows what. So, I don't see a near-term investment, probably is not precluding the long-term investment, because what that near-term investment is going to be doing is finding a way to maximize what we call the shelf in the middle of the site and make it more usable.
Okay, no, thanks, I appreciate that, you're right, and the name, the name itself sets a reasonable expectation, just by what it's called, but that sounds great, and I would just like to try to see us emphasize more on the just get it open, because it seems like if that's what the cost figure is going to be just to get it open, it's probably going to be quite a few years before there's a more significant major investment, whatever that could be way off in the future, and I don't, and the nice thing about just having something minimal is you could kind of learn just what is the site good for, and it'd be just getting people there, because right now, nobody even spends any time there, so they, it's probably hard to even know what is reasonable to be used or to do there, but just by having people there, I think things sort of can kind of just happen organically where ideas flow, yeah.
Councilmember Sperry?
Well, in my opinion, Twin Springs has been quite neglected for some time, it's been this little project with no funding out for many years now, and frankly, if I lived in a house that had no yard and was right next to it, and the first thing I get told when I come to the meeting is, "we just want to do the minimum." Now, for some people, they might think that's great, because they want to keep it in, say, a more natural step and all that kind of stuff, but I, I don't know, I kind of like Councilmember Smith's idea about, you know, see how people use it, you know, see what people do, and kind of build on that, and I don't know how you would do that, whether, you know, because I'm sure people are out there walking their dogs and doing stuff like that now, I mean, I don't really know, but it seems like in some ways, yeah, I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, but anyway. And the other piece too is, I think before we get too far down the road, we need to figure out, it's great to have a plan, but we're also, at this point, don't have any resources to implement that, and I appreciated what you said about by doing the planning, then that does open up grant possibilities, so I do appreciate that.
So, I think, one thing, I mean, certainly, Councilmember Smith has got a good idea there, see how people use it and that, but the other question is, the bare minimum to open it, I mean, you need a parking lot, and you need access, because they certainly can't be parking down on 80th Street, so you've got a parking lot that has to be put in, and you've got to make sure the road is adequate, rather than that service road necess, that service road may be adequate, but it may need some more work, so I can easily see where the money would really need to be spent. City Manager?
Yeah, regarding the parking lot, I think a few of you have made a comment that, hey, this is a neighborhood park, it's a park that a lot of people could just walk to, so, part of the process is, how big does this parking lot really need to be, and are there some on-street parking opportunities? We think there might be, so that's going to be part of this conceptual layout process. Our main question for you is, the three steps that are laid out in your council bill, does that process look okay to you? That's our main question for tonight.
Right, so basically, then you want to know about the inventory analysis, the site program development, and the interim plan documentation.
Yeah, and if it is, we'll have it back on for you to approve on consent in the near future.
So, Councilmember Herbig?
I just want to say one quick thing about parking, I will point out that six days a week, there's a huge empty parking lot kitty corner from there, and we, again, this is a place we might look into, working with the church over there to potentially open up their parking the rest of the week, because otherwise, it's just a bunch of concrete.
That's a good point, yeah.
Can I make another comment on that?
Yeah.
You know, there is a lot of on-street or off-street parking right there in front of the, I believe it's East Creek Village Platte, because when they did the site improvements or for frontage improvements, they set it way back, and I actually think, I mean, it would be a lot nicer to have a lot more usability of that space or the parking lot where Councilmember Herbig's talking about, and I know it would dramatically help on our cost side if we can try to come up with some alternative parking issues, I don't think we need to add a bunch more pavement.
Councilmember Sperry?
So, the only concern, well, I've already said about the other concerns, but as far as the process, on the number, on the first one, we've gotten here, we're going to have one public meeting, and that, to me, does not sound like enough, because a lot of people don't come to the public meeting, so if they're, and I did, I was very pleased to see some online, it says, "public feedback ideas through online survey" could also be obtained, and I would think just that it tends to be young families that are living in the homes, the newer homes that are built there, that they would be probably much more able to participate through online means, and also, you know, consider doing some kind of a, I don't know if you want to record the meeting or something online that would explain it, you know, something, even if it's a PowerPoint with some narration or something, because otherwise, it just, only a tiny percentage are going to be able to participate in the process, and that, we've found that it doesn't really work very well, so I would just highly consider, and the other thing is, there's probably homeowners associations with those large developments, so you might be able to have a nice network that way, and they could email out for you and stuff.
A great idea, and, you know, if we actually, if we do a presentation at the public meeting, we could videotape it and then put it on the website, and so. This, that's for staff report, that's not for this discussion.
All right, so, I guess we're looking forward, we're looking for a motion to bring forward a contract with Berger Partnership for development of an interim plan with the $40,000 budget.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract.
We're not asking you to.
Not approve the contract, to bring the contract forward.
Approve the outline, I guess is what it is.
You'll bring the contract forward. And I'll second that. Councilmember Curtis, you had a question?
I was just wondering if we could be a little more specific in that first section, the inventory analysis, say something like, we'll set some minimal standards of how many families we're trying to get input from, because if you get too few people, you know, three people show up and give their comments, and then you go through a whole bunch of work of planning some stuff, and then the next 12 people don't like it, so to say, we'll get at least 12 people, or at least 15, or whatever's, you know, it's not like we're trying to get a statistically significant analysis here, but at least enough so we feel we have a pretty good flavor for what the community or the right around there actually wants, and I agree with, let's not waste millions of dollars on parking and roads, let's, let's just make it, we could create way more people space and dog space and whatever space by not wasting it on roads and parking.
All right, so we have a motion in front of us here to, do you want to make an amendment to the main motion to have this expanded?
Yeah, I'm sorry, let me go to that, so, so what did you, on the amendment, you said?
Yeah, amendment to have the realistic, a number. You're asking for a number here in one, or you're looking, asking for some threshold?
I think I would need some guidance, something that you feel you've got a really good sense of the public.
Good sampling.
Yeah, good sampling.
Right, so I think what we would do is, this would be, from the comments we've heard tonight, then there would be a staff discussion with Berger on kind of refining the scope to address some of the comments that you've raised this evening.
Including the?
Including that, so it would be basically addressing some of those questions, sort of to clarify what I've heard is sort of the public outreach effort largely. That being said, it sounds like Council ready to move forward, so if that's the case, then what we would be doing then is, if possible, on the consent agenda on the 24th, would be asking for a council motion to authorize the city manager to execute the contract, that would be the next step.
Okay, so, we've got a motion to have staff bring forward a contract with Berger, Partnership for Development of In interim Plan, and they're taking what we said tonight and going to develop that into a contract, so.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Can, does the parking, that small parking area in the park that was developed by the Public Works or the Brightwater, part of the Brightwater facility, is that?
The one right in front?
Will that, can we use that in our account for our parking requirements?
I'll attempt to answer that initially, but the reality is, that's what this is, that's exactly one of the questions to answer as part of this.
Okay.
There's asphalt there, is it the right size to use, you know, does it, is it the right size to meet the city's parking requirements? If we use that for parking, is it now considered stormwater, it requires stormwater treatment now, probably not, if it becomes usable, then does it trigger stormwater, what does that look like, do we have room to do that treatment? So, these are all actually things we would explore as part of this process.
Great, thank you.
If that little parking lot there, right at the end of 192nd Street is what you're talking about?
Yes.
Then could you scroll up on this map just a tiny bit?
It probably doesn't show on this, because this was done in 2012.
Right, but it shows, I think, what I had been thinking all along, the other way.
The other way?
At the north end of the park.
Yeah, what I've been seeing is that number three, the separate driveway off 195th, that goes up to a parking area and then can continue through a fence into the, into the access of the pump area, so I always thought of number three as where the parking was going to be.
That is one area that was looked at, possibility for parking in that area, but that would be a new parking lot, which would be sort of expensive to build, what Councilmember Smith is talking about.
Is the one right there at the bottom, the little small one?
Right.
That holds?
Yeah, actually, I was talking about both of them.
Both of them?
Yeah.
So, I think what we're trying to look at is creative ways to minimize the amount of paving and still be able to provide the ability for people to park and use that site, the ability for people to walk to the site and use the site, so those are some of the things that we're trying to keep in mind to make, you know, make circulation for pedestrians and people not in cars available, and then people in cars that we, how can we do that without having to build a new parking lot?
I guess what I would want to see with that little parking lot in the front, that the park itself is made handicapped accessible. Since I've been on a walker and whatever, I'm finding some serious limitations all over the place in getting around, so I would like to make sure that it's accessible to handicapped.
That could be true, I think there would still be a challenge then, even if that parking lot was accessible, making the rest of the park sort of ADA accessible, given the steep slopes and being able to cross two streams and everything else, so again, we'll have to sort of be mindful of the type of improvements we do and what would be or could not be ADA accessible, given the steep slopes and everything else out there.
All right, so there's a motion in front of us, any more questions?
I have a question slash comment, just a couple of times during this discussion, I've heard the term "city's parking requirements," but correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think the city has parking requirements for parks, does it?
There's no specific number, I think it's as determined by the city manager or the designee.
Okay, then there's no requirements, no, I'm just kidding, but, yeah, so, we don't have, you know, so many spaces per acre or something in the code for parking requirements.
If there's nothing else on this, then, so, we've got a motion on the table to have have staff bring forward a contract with Berger Partnership. Since the contract's coming before us and we're just asking to prepare it, I don't know that we need to do a roll call votes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, unanimously, come forward with that. Opposed? Great. Inanimously, come forward with that and let us see what you've got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, staff report.
Your honor, I have just one item. Currently under contract and on site, we have a contractor that's doing a pedestrian improvement at the Arrowhead Curve, so just south of Arrowhead Elementary School on Arrowhead Drive. Contractor's literally on site. This was as a result of the NTPP process. Citizens, especially residents who have school-aged children, express concern about an adequate walkway around that corner and getting to school. So our city engineer has come up with a cost-effective and efficient solution, in my opinion, to add more walkway space around that curve. And you have approved this contract already. But what it does is, on the diagram there, you can see in the gray is where new asphalt is being added, which allows for that curve to be widened, which allows for an expanded walkway on the inside of that curve. Initially, our traffic engineer wanted to do a full width overlay, asphalt overlay of that curve. But he wanted to also stay within budget. And looking at the budget at the time, he realized that he wouldn't be able to do a full width overlay. And so what we're doing is, we're grinding away some of the edge, and then we're just adding new asphalt to that curve. A month ago, I thought that would have been just fine. But in the last couple of weeks, I realized our community has pretty high expectations on the way things look. And the way he's contracted out and designed it and everything, it'll work, it'll function. But some folks may, heaven forbid, think it might be ugly. So for $18,000 to $20,000, and currently the contract for this portion is $41,000. But for another $18,000 to $20,000, you can get a full width overlay. And I thought about this, they were actually supposed to do this work last week while I was on vacation, but because of weather issues, it's now this week when they're going to be doing the work. But unfortunately, while I was on vacation, I was thinking about what possible train wrecks could be coming, given the last couple of train wrecks we've had. And I was thinking about this project. Could this turn into a project where the citizens revolt and say it's ugly? So if you think that that kind of a train wreck might be coming, you could approve a change order for this for about $20,000 for this to get a full width overlay, and would be much more pretty.
Well, despite the fact that it might be pretty, was that the engineering preliminary decision, was to do a full width overlay?
Yeah.
But we cut that because of budgetary constraints?
Because of budget, yeah. His first preference was to do a full width overlay. And that, that road is older asphalt, so it could use an overlay. So it would be, it would be effective use of the asphalt. It's not like that's, yeah, that could be on track for an overlay.
Rob, or city manager, I have a question. So if the asphalt is rated at such a level that we would, or it's very close to wanting an overlay or needing one, then I would say absolutely. But I, I have no problem saying, I don't want us paving things just to pave them. I mean, we, we have utility crews and, and, you know, cable companies, utility companies, NUD, they tear up our roads all the time that we don't like, and it doesn't mean we have to repave the entire road every time. So-
We usually, we usually make utility companies either do full width overlays or half width overlays.
Well, there's a lot of partial width overlays throughout our city then, then we're not enforcing that. So if that's the case, I just see this happening all the time. Maybe they're just private plat developers that are connecting to utilities. But I guess my point is, I don't, I don't want us to have to feel like every time we're making an improvement in a street, we have to do a full width overlay just to satisfy the aesthetics. Aesthetics is one thing. But $20,000 goes towards making other really needed improvements towards safety. And so I, if it needs it, I'm for it. If it doesn't need it, I'm not for it.
Yeah. I mean, the, the road could use it, much like many other roads in the city. One other piece of, I guess, good news is, we're not being gouged with this change order. The contractor is using the same unit prices that they produced in the base bid itself. So if that helps at all.
Councilmember Herbig, then Councilmember Sperry.
So the issue is just that on the outside of the curb, on the curve, we would have black new asphalt, and the rest of the curve, we would have old gray asphalt? Is that really the aesthetic?
Yeah. And, and so as you're driving it, the stripe, if you look, the yellow stripe will be very close to the old asphalt. And so somebody could say, "It's confusing," or, I don't know.
Is there any concern that it would, I don't know, drive kind of funny if you have your, you know, if you're going south, no, I guess north, you're going north, and you're going around that curve, you know, if you have one of your tires on the new asphalt and the other one on the old, is there any concern that maybe there'd be some, I don't know, issues where the two pieces are meeting each other with a groove or anything?
No.
Councilmember Sperry.
Well, thank you for thinking about this. I appreciate this attention to detail. Is there any disruption in terms of, for the school traffic and all that during the overlay? Would they do it on the weekend, or how would they do it?
They're doing it right now. They're out there today, and they're going to be out there tomorrow. And I actually need a decision from you tonight, because they'll actually do the work tomorrow. They have that whole curve shut down right now.
Okay.
And, and there's a pretty easy detour route just right before that curve. So that, that entire curve is shut down for the next, in both directions for the next several days.
Okay. So it's already in process? This is just kind of, do we want to do the full width or not?
Yeah. And I apologize for bringing it to you this late, but that's what I get for thinking about this stuff when I'm on vacation. And if, if the work would have been done as scheduled without bad weather last week, then I wouldn't even be bringing this up. I'm just trying to look for future train wrecks. And I don't know if it would be a train wreck or not. I certainly couldn't predict the train, a couple of train wrecks from the last couple of weeks.
Well, I, I mean, I'll, go ahead. You have somebody on the other side?
I know. Were you finished?
I was gonna say, you know, I would support this. I mean, it seems very reasonable. It's something that was going to, on track to be done anyway. Do it now, or you've got it all already set up.
Deputy Mayor.
I, you know, I'm in favor of an asphalt overlay, but I have a question about this sort of crosshatch line here. Is this a barrier that eliminates, that demarcates the walkway versus the roadway?
Chris might be able to answer that.
And, and I remember several years ago, we looked at this same very safety issue, and the decision was to route the kids up and probably where the detour is now for traffic. And they were supposed to walk that other street and then come out, huh? It didn't work.
Good evening, council. I think-
Walk there, or what?
When we were receiving feedback prior to the Neighborhood Transportation Plan Program, we didn't have a project there. But when we worked with the community and the neighbors and created the plan for the Green South Neighborhood, this was a project that rose to please do something within the resources of the NTPP program. So as Rob said, that's why, if we can put a little asphalt on the outside, we can get the increased walkway that we want on the inside of the curve. The way Brett has it designed now is with a thick stripe with reflectors. So the white line is painted, and then it has reflectors on it to delineate the corner. So it doesn't have a curb, it doesn't have a physical barrier at this time.
Because there are a lot of people that, they're late to work, they're roaring up there, going around the corner. And if their kids walk in there without a barrier, I'm concerned, just because you've got more asphalt on the side.
Yeah. And currently, there's an extruded curb around there on what little space there is. What I'd like to do is install this as is, and then if needed, we can look at bringing back an extruded curb.
Yeah, that wouldn't be hard.
Yeah.
What would be hard?
It would not be hard to add a curb later if we chose to.
So I guess, looking at other jurisdictions around, they also use those signs, you know, the pedestrian walking, you know, in the painted area that's allocated-
Oh, just the PED symbol on the ground?
Yeah, the PED symbol, yeah. Is there any plans of doing that here?
I, I don't think we're-
To sort of delineate, this is for, for kids, people walking, where you can't park here?
I don't see it on Brett's plan. It's not wide enough for parking, I believe. But we very often have King County come back and put thermoplastic symbols down for us. That's not hard either.
Fine. Councilmember Curtis?
I guess just at a, kind of a high policy level, I think we've done about 90 of these neighborhood projects. And I think there's been three that have created a lot of, what would be conceived as negative feedback. But that means most of them turn out really well. And so to start designing projects for the what might happen, I think that's not a good policy direction. If we see problems, we listen to our citizens, and they tell us what they don't like, and we fix it. And I'm okay with that. I think I'd rather use that approach than, now, if we start getting, you know, 50% error rate, then everybody's complaining about everything, well, then we just have to change our thinking. But right now, I'd say in general, we're doing a good job. And we're, I wouldn't expect us to be 100% perfect. So I would be not inclined to spend $20,000 just to make it nice so maybe we could prevent problems, because it might not prevent problems either. Somebody might be unhappy with some other aspect of it. So I'd say we just do the safety thing, because that's what we're doing it for, for pedestrian safety, and just limit it to that.
One thing I would add to what Rob said is, you know, if we're moving the center line, we have to grind out whatever is there. So you'll have new asphalt on the outside, you could have some, you know, grinding of paint, which we do all, that's not uncommon. It doesn't change how the road works. But I think it's safe to say that it'll look patchy and could have some grinding, but we will have the desired more real estate for pedestrians, which is what we were after.
And I guess, you know, ultimately, when we, as we keep looking at all of our roads throughout the city, we're always evaluating which actually need overlays and which would need the other treatments. So if it gets bad enough, we'll deal with it from that standpoint. But it's a different issue than safety. So I'd say, deal with the safety right now, because that should be, that's our focus. And if it needs help as a road, then deal with that separate step.
I guess I would feel that way, too, except engineering had this as a full overlay, because it's about time to do that road. So that's what, Councilmember Herbig.
Yeah, I'm, I have been going back and forth in my head on this. And I think, I think that because we already have so many mobilized out there, and because the asphalt isn't in the greatest of condition anyway, I don't see any harm in doing the overlay right now and just knocking that off our list and, and moving on. If this was a relatively newer road, then I wouldn't be inclined to, to go the extra mile right now. But since it's already mobilized, they're out there, they're ready to go, I don't see any harm and of just knocking this off of our list.
Councilmember Curtis?
Do we have some contingency funds, or where would this $20,000 come from?
So fund balances in REIT and General Fund and Street Fund have all came out much stronger than expected in the, at the end of the 2016 biennium. So we'll definitely be able to access it from those funds.
Okay. Anything else?
I was just gonna add that I'm in favor of the full overlay, mainly because they're there and the road needs it. But also, I kind of look at things with a new driver in my house filter. And sometimes when pavement does different things in the line, they may not follow the correct line. So, especially on dark and rainy nights. I've seen that.
All right. Any further discussion? So chair, inter- motion then to authorize the funds to do the additional paving work? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Councilmember Curtis?
Just one last comment. So I'm going to vote for this, but I still don't want to see it as a policy direction change. I want it to see as one-off for a specific reason.
Deputy Mayor?
I still see a safety problem here. We have had a C-curb going around there in a narrower walkway. And just because you have a white line doesn't mean kids aren't going to be walking around there pushing and shoving each other and somebody roaring around the corner. I just see it as an accident waiting to happen. And I really think we ought to have a C-curb, at least a C-curb, or the concrete curbs brightly painted going around, at least around the corner past the curve as it goes south, as cars are coming around. To keep the kids in the walkway and to keep the cars in the roadway, hopefully. A Jersey barrier would be even better.
Councilmember Herbig?
I, I think we could actually go in a slightly different direction and look at plastic bollards glued on there to, you know, really visible reflective, visual separation for drivers, too.
You're talking about like those, what we call candlesticks?
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm thinking about.
Candlesticks or the bollards?
I'm, I'm thinking the, the plastic candlesticks, you know, that you glue onto-
I was thinking the more, the plastic reflective Jersey barrier type.
No, I, no, no, that's not what I was thinking. I was just thinking of a cheaper way.
We don't want to get into designing this. This is what the engineering staff is for. This is not our job. Anyway, any further discussion? All right. So the motion before us then is to authorize the city manager to go ahead spending the $60,000. It's there, it's in our funds. Kelly, what do you want to do? Do you want a roll call vote? Okay.
Forty already.
Here I am, sorry.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
All right.
And just to make it belt and suspenders official, we'll have this on your consent agenda on the 24th, ratifying what you just approved. Just so it's official even more on the record, so.
I would like to add, it's still weather contingent.
Yes.
You know, we asked the contractor for the change order numbers today. They've been very willing to help us out. I actually have some work tonight to help further it happening tomorrow. So we will do our best to pull it off as soon as possible.
All right. Anything else? Mr. City Manager? Uh, Councilmember Comments Reports Initiative, Stacy. Councilmember Danuski?
Nothing to add.
Uh, Deputy Mayor?
I'd just like to compliment city engineering, Public Works, and all the, and what Brett Schock's been doing with the neighborhood improvement projects. Our goal was to get to Target Zero, and to do whatever we could to make the neighborhood safer. And I think we're going in the right direction. And in spite of the negative comments on a fairly recent change that was made, I think that change was a much safer change up there on Simon's Road. Anytime you have an intersection that's an angular intersection, it, it's an accident waiting to happen. It needs to be a right angle. And they were complaining about a, a light that was originally planned for there. Yes, it's on the long-range plan. But if you put a light in there, you don't put a light in with an angular intersection, you square it off when you do it that way for the, for a signal. So I, I think what was done, was done with good intent. The response was unexpected, and I think the viciousness of the response was totally out of proportion to, to the problem at hand. I like to compliment Chris and Brett and everybody else that's been involved in this program to improve the safety in our neighborhoods. You've done a, done a great job, and we need to continue doing that in spite of negative stuff that flies around. Stay the course. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to add, except that a session ends on Sunday, so my commute gets much shorter after this week.
Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes. Rob had mentioned in an email about the library board. And as I've mentioned several times, we are going to be meeting in May- several times, we are going to be meeting in May with most likely going to be disbanding. And the reason for that is that there really doesn't seem to be a specific purpose for the board at this point. It was formed in response to get the new library going. Once the new library was going, we all kind of looked at each other. And evidently, this, it's kind of a widespread thing throughout the system. And so Mr. Curtis mentioned a couple of options. One was to repeal the ordinance, was that one?
Yeah, repeal the ordinance that created the advisory board.
And then the other was to put a section of code that would allow us to sort of inactivate it and leave it there if we needed it. So I don't have a strong preference either way. One thing is that we are meeting in May, and so I think it would probably be best to not have it on the agenda until after that, so we haven't really had that final thing. You know, the easy thing would be just to make it so you can inactivate it, but in some ways, I think that it just needs to be repealed, is what I would say. So would it be okay if I just wait, it'd be the first Tuesday in May, we'll be meeting, and then I can report back and get it going at that point, or what would your thoughts be?
Sure. Do you want to ask the advisory committee what option they recommend, or?
You know, that is a good idea. It is, it's just a really funny thing, because the Friends Group, as I mentioned, doesn't have a leader. And then you may have read in the paper that the entire King County Library, the director is no longer there. So it's just an odd time. But yeah, I can do that. I can ask what they would prefer, and then report back. That would be fun.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Smith.
The only thing I have to say is, at the risk of being redundant, I would like to kind of piggyback Councilmember or Deputy Mayor Van Ness's comments. And I mean, we're the seven up here making the decisions to set policy and budget priorities, and everything may not go perfect. I know, and when I run my business, it doesn't go perfect. And you adjust, and you adapt, and you just, you stay the course when you know you're doing things right. And we're on the right track. We may not be a hundred percent on the mark every time, but that doesn't mean we're not doing the right thing. And so I appreciate what the staff has done, and I appreciate what Brett, our city engineer, or our traffic engineer has done. And I'm pleased. I'm not pleased when you get negative feedback, but that's, hey, that comes, we're all used to feedback, so that's just part of the gig. Anyway, thank you.
One little thing to that. This is an example of the city acting like a business. Pilot projects, being nimble, doing things on a trial basis and tweaking them, pivoting them. It's a startup kind of a way of thinking. And it's really foreign to government, in the sense that we normally study things forever and eliminate all risk before we act on anything. And this is a major departure from that, in an effort to get to the cause of some safety problems within our city, and to make quick, inexpensive fixes that'll diminish that risk. So I applaud the city for doing it this way. It's good. Thank you.
Couple things. I was at town hall meeting with Del Benny, and she's very much in favor of tax-free municipal bond issues. And there's a movement on to get rid of the tax-free municipal bonds, and this is really important to us and to the two bonds that we now have. Not so much the one we have now, it's the one that's coming in 19. So there's a letter that's been drafted to Representative Del Benny, because she's on the House Side of the Ways and Means, on the tax-free immunity bond issue. And we just want your approval and whatever, that once this is written, we're going to adapt it to RICARD as well as our Senate delegation, and I'm going to sign it. So I just, we just wanted you to know that that's what we're doing, and just to make sure you're in agreement with it. Also, I need someone on June 1st, from 3:00 to 5:00, 4 o'clock, to do the ribbon cutting on the community market. So Deputy Mayor?
Okay.
June 1st, 3:00 to 5:00. The farmer's market will open. Right here on the corner of 187th, I think it is, and 68th, the church up there. 3:00 to 5:00, the ribbon cutting's at 4:00. All right, one last thing. So I think that you know that about two, three weeks ago, one kayak was stolen. And then a couple of weeks ago, two kayaks were stolen. And then a canoe was stolen.
And we're, specifically talking about Squire's Landing Park?
Talking about Squire's Landing and the canoe-kayak program there in the rental space that the Kenmore Waterfront Activity Center has developed. Thief, we have him on video, and he's been caught, we think. He tried to steal a boat at Bothell Landing, Steve Holmes, and his canoe-kayak rental up there, or his canoe stand-up paddleboard rental. And he stole a canoe, and Mr. Holmes noticed this funny guy in the parking lot, and he had to go off and do something, came back, and the boat was gone. So he went out looking, and he saw this boat coming up, 5:22, on a roof of a car. So he ran a red light, cut the guy off, and jumped out of his car and grabbed him and said, "You're under citizen's arrest." And held him there until the Bothell Police came. So Bothell Police has got him. So we're waiting for confirmation that the video that we have, with great facial recognition on the guy, to whether or not it's the same guy, we think it is. So if there is no further business to come in front of us, we are adjourned.